Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes or reports received and filed?
We have the collector's main twenty twenty-five piece.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Looks like we've got a short-term disability insurance meeting tomorrow morning. Russellville Playground Rigging Cutting tomorrow afternoon. Colcatta Communities Barbecue tomorrow afternoon. Chamber Connections tomorrow, or Thursday afternoon. I think that's about it until this week.
Tomorrow is Saint Mary's Ice Cream Social during the noon, early afternoon hours, I think. And you mentioned Russellville. Thursday is holiday.
Yes.
That's all.
Now, I have, tomorrow I have a E S G R National Guard Luncheon and Awards Ceremony hosting in Russellville. Thursday, Thursday evening, we have our two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee meeting at six P M. So, that is all I have. Do we have any commission comments? Okay. Bits and contracts. Approval and signing of D H S S contract for Adult Brain Injury Program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is time to renew the contract that we have for the Adult Brain Injury Service Coordinator. If you remember, at the beginning of this year, they increased the current year to eighty-four thousand three hundred, and they kept that new amount for the next year. I'm sure it'll be subject to appropriation once the federal budget is done, but the contract with us starts July one, so they go ahead, they went ahead and let that contract. So, I would just ask you to sign that for today.
All right, good. Make motion to approve and sign the D H S S contract for Adult Brain Injury Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Renewal one of food products for the Prender Family Center.
We just did it today, so they are, this is the first renewal, and it's a three percent increase, and Toby is okay, and Jill has reviewed the, reviewed the contract, so we're asking just to renew this.
Did she get that all accurate?
She did.
Okay, she did, did a good job.
I'm reading the notes from Jill.
All right.
All right, good. I'll make a motion to renew, approve the renewal one of the food products for the Prender Family Center with Cole wholesale.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Perpetual signing of renewal agreement with J C M G Assistance with Show Me Healthy Women Program.
Hello, so when clients come to us to qualify for the Show Me Healthy Women Program, Michelle and Jill assist them, but then if they need more services like mammograms or things that we can't provide, we have a contract with J C M G to provide those services, and we reimburse them once we're reimbursed from D H S S. So, this is just a contract for them to provide those services at the Show Me Healthy Women rate. Pass the papers.
All right. You want to hear these? All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign a renewal agreement with J C M G Assistance with Show Me Healthy Women Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Change order number one for twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, Interview Room Recording System.
Director Bryan was presented this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, right now, we already have approved, it was put out for a bit in R I P for the Sheriff's Interview Room System Recording System. During that process, we went through and we actually discovered, based upon the number of devices that were gonna be plugged in, that we were gonna be short ports, and plus, I would rather just keep it on its own isolated network. So, I have a change order requesting the purchase of two-axis twenty-four-port P O E switches with two single-mode S F P modules for a purchase price of two thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. And I would ask that get approved today.
How'd he grill Bryan about this, though? Wanted to get.
He came to me first because he knew that my, a yes would be easy for me.
Please, please don't, please don't please, sir.
I'm just trying to figure out why we're still plugging things in.
Okay.
Yeah, he explained it to me with crayons and some pictures.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve Change Order Number One for twenty twenty-five dash seventeen Interview Room Recording System, price of two thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, Brian. Well, today, that, that's probably.
Now, new business, account payable review. County Collector to present annual settlement for a year ended on two-twenty-eight of twenty twenty-five.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
For me, I just passed out the annual settlement for my year ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. It's actually off three dollars. Didn't, couldn't find three dollars somewhere that, but I don't feel too bad about that out of a hundred and eleven million, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Three hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred, three dollars being off three dollars is pretty minimal, so. But our total collections this year, our total, I told charges were that hundred and eleven million, three hundred and eighteen, nine hundred, six thousand and three cents. The total amount of credits that we took in was less than three dollars. I'm pretty sure we know where that's at, we just couldn't find the exact account that it belonged to. Just asking for your all's approval. It will need to be signed by the clerk and submitted to the state, once you all approve it. I think our process went pretty well this year, as usual.
I know we have our auditors here, what do you think of being three dollars?
Our charter over.
Was that gonna, is that a dollar?
It's off, so.
So, this is where I just give you three dollars, I hear, make it right. Harry's gonna, this gonna drive him crazy.
It will. Well, we don't know if one side was off a million and the other side was off a million and three dollars, and the net off is three dollars. I'm just kidding about that, but.
I think we might have found that, if it was off.
You think so?
Hey, I hope so.
Okay.
And I would be speaking to you from a different location.
We'd be back to the sheriff talking about where Larry is working, right, or, yeah, sitting. I'm just curious, going forward a couple of years, Larry, and looking into the future, when you do this, when you tell the school district, is this multiple school districts? This is multiple districts, I guess, right?
Six of them.
Six of them. You're saying to them eighty thousand, I'm sorry, eighty million, forty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents we're sending to those, you are sending to those six school districts.
Yes.
In the future, you're gonna have to tell each one of them, we're not sending you all of what we would have sent, we're gonna withhold senior freeze money from you, from each of you six, correct? So, this.
I'm not sure how that will appear on this, to be honest with you. I mean, we haven't reached that point yet.
Right.
This, this reflects actual collections and distributions. Since we won't be collecting that money, I know I have to provide a report to them showing how much it has cost them, but I'm not sure that'll be part of this two oh five.
Okay. There's a collector fee in here for a hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents, so you only charge one sixty-nine eighty to handle a hundred and eleven million dollars?
Well, that's all you all let me have, is how much you all collect. I'd be glad to let you up that ante anytime you want.
Find that three dollars I'm gonna talk about.
They opened the can worms, I apologize.
Do we make a motion to accept the collector's report? Is that?
Yes, sir.
What, the drill? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the county collector annual statement for year ended on two-twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, signing the surplus titles. First reading of budget adjustment number four.
Yes, this is for nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Again, the first reading, I'll bring it back up in ten days. This is a quarter for the law enforcement block grant that the sheriff talked about last week, so we're just gonna change the budget due to that grant award, but I'll bring it back up in ten days.
Okay, now we will go to signing the surplus title.
This is an ambulance, two thousand and nineteen, that they're going to surplus and sell, so.
I'll make a motion to sign the surplus title on the twenty nineteen ambulance that's used by Cole County E M S.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of the Missouri Development Finance Board Disbursement Request for the United Capital Soccer Club Tax Credits.
I will tell you guys, sign an agreement back in April of twenty-three. It's according to a statute that this money can then be passed through the county from that club, but I'll let you explain this, it's your very appreciated.
You betcha.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, going back to the United Capital City Soccer Club Project, a couple of years ago, Cole County was a sponsor to their application to Missouri Development Finance Board seeking an allocation of contribution tax credits. So, those tax credits allow them to go out and solicit private donations and contributions to a fund, and that contributor would ultimately have the opportunity to receive a tax credit worth fifty percent of their initial contribution. So, they were awarded a million dollars in contribution tax credits back in two thousand and twenty-three, and they've now started to receive contributions to that project fund. So, those contributors, and I'll, I'll be very brief on this, there's kind of two parallel paths that take place. So, a private contribution is made to the project fund with the Missouri Development Finance Board, and the Missouri Development Finance Board works, works with that contributor in the State Missouri Department of Revenue to issue that contributor a tax credit. So, that happens without the county's involvement. The county is involved as the sponsor to the application, as a pass-through in order for those funds that were contributed to be drawn down by the project. So, in order for United Capital City to access the funds that were contributed to the project fund, the county is a pass-through. And so, they are finally ready to start drawing down funds in that, in their fund balance with the Missouri Development Finance Board. So, the initial request is drafted by United Capital City. It is kind of passed through the county, then it is passed on to Missouri Development Finance Board. They will review the dispersment request, they'll ensure the fund balance has enough to, you know, meet that dispersment request. They will then wire those funds, Missouri Development Finance Board, to the county, and the county will wire them to United Capital City. So, truly just kind of a in-between pass-through on this, but the, the goal is to try and have as few of these dispersments as possible, so that it's not a constant drawdown. But this being the first one, just kind of one to talk through, and if there's any question you have, obviously, if they're gonna come up, have to help navigate that process as well. But yeah, as you can see, construction's beginning, contributions are starting, and so looking forward to them to, you know, utilize these resources over the next year.
We, we knew this was going to ultimately come, come to this, that we signed the paperwork. We did the sponsorship, so to speak, which is why you have to have a public entity do a sponsorship to make this happen.
Correct. And the Missouri Development Finance Board will do the, more of the due diligence on, you know, the invoices and doing the compliance work on ensuring eligible costs.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve and sign the Missouri Development Finance Board Dispersment Request for the capital, I'm sorry, for the United Capital Soccer Club Tax Credit Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Luke.
Okay. Discussion of rooftop unit replacement for the Sheriff's Department.
Morning.
Morning.
Last week, we had rooftop number nine, which serves the kitchen, went bad. I know at budget time, we talked about replacing all the rooftops, which was, at that time, was a rough, rough estimate of one point eight to two million dollars. I look to repair costs this time versus replacement costs. I don't wanna say any numbers right now, 'cause I think we might have to bid the one, and I don't want that number to get out. Repair costs, we're gonna do a cooperative agreement, which I can give you that number, which is twenty-seven thousand, fifty dollars. Those units are fifteen years old, they're on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And that's just going away from when they were installed. They are getting to the age of their lifetime. We've had it. Aaron can attest to the money we've been putting into some of those units already. Right now, we're, we've talked about it, we're just gonna repair the one that's there, if that's agreeable with you guys, and then hopefully next year, we'll get it up to bid to replace those units and do it at one time. I know it's a big chunk of change, but we've had the study done, what units need to go up there. That study's already been completed and paid for. So, we're already halfway down the road for that, so.
And we can't do the repair, because it is piggybacking off of the repair maintenance contract we currently have, so. But we cannot talk about replacing, it would have to be bid.
So, these units been leaking for a while?
Yeah. Well, I guess it just started, I guess, yes.
They've been leaking for a while, or they just started?
I guess they've been leaking for a while.
'Cause I was told they've been leaking for a while, so. And is the other compressor that's still working, leaking?
No, it's, that's, that's, that system's tight.
And it's trying to keep up with the whole thing?
In the kitchen, correct.
And how many units do we have total? This is unit number nine.
We got nine units total.
Okay, I thought there were more than that for some reason. And these units, how many of them are the exact same unit?
Same size.
I mean, exactly the same, so if you have one, then if we ordered one at a time and tried to replace these.
They're different sizes.
Little by little, so.
They're different sizes.
All nine of them, or the?
I'd have to look at the paperwork, but there's fifty tons, there's sixty tons up there, and there's twenty-five tons, there's a twenty-ton.
So, they're all custom, or some of them are custom?
They're all custom, according to the sheets that I've got. They've all got especially heat recovery wheels, outside air dampers.
Which, I mean, it makes sense to have different ones handling different areas, so. You got the kitchen, and maybe you just got more heat, humidity, or you got the jail areas.
They all have heat recovery on them, dehumidification on them.
I'd just like to have more information. I know Major Bullinger had emailed you and asked about some of it, and I didn't get a reply, didn't see it back, and I messaged you this morning, heard something about it. I think there's more moving parts to this, 'cause if we're gonna have to start replacing stuff, we can, they're not all the same size or custom sizes, but there are parts from some that we could use to maybe limp the other ones along, and I don't necessarily think we should do these all at one time. And I think there's a logistics headache that's gonna come with getting cranes in there. I just think there's a lot of moving parts to it, and I'm not so sure we shouldn't look at going ahead and looking at maybe getting this first one done, or maybe the first couple done, 'cause what I'm understanding is we're gonna have to block traffic off, we may have to move prisoners and shut things down to, to get these in, I just think there's a whole lot of other questions.
I know.
So, I mean, if y'all just wanna go ahead and dump twenty-seven in it now, rather than looking at it, I mean, it's still gonna take fourteen, fifteen weeks to get the condenser coil in and such, and if it goes down, it goes down, it's, it's down completely in the kitchen. I don't know what y'all would do if it goes down, if we bring some kind of.
We have to figure something out temporarily.
Construction units that you just put in there to keep it, so. And as much as I don't wanna kick the repair down the road, do we wanna look at doing this and getting some kind of plan for fixing it? I, it's a pain in the butt, and we did it at budget time, we kinda kicked the can down the road, and now it's, it's here, so.
And it's only gonna get worse, for sure.
Well, originally, I had the same idea of just, if, if we replace them as they go out, maybe, you know, I mean, ultimately, it's gonna cost us the same amount, but I, I.
If we bid it out, it's probably gonna be additional four or six weeks, 'cause we had to put the paper.
Oh, absolutely, thirty days for sure.
Yeah, so, we bumped the way out there.
And this one is fifteen years old, runs twenty-four seven, is the way I understand, so.
They all.
We're on this one for now, get, and go ahead and maybe start the bid process if you'd like. Maybe half of them, budget purposes alone, we may need, need to do it in the stages.
Yeah.
I would, I would ask that we give it a better title than a rooftop unit. I mean, what, what is a rooftop unit?
It's a unit that sits on top of the roof.
Well, what does it do? What does it do?
Supply, heating, and cooling.
Yes. It's an H V A C rooftop unit, so that.
I do put this on the agenda, sir.
Okay. But I, I think I agree with, with what we need to do now, and then what we need to do later, which is look at potential someday fixing, repairing, replacing another eight units. And do we do them one at a time, two at a time, three at a time, or is there a way to measure the useful life for the next one to fail?
Some okay, let's keep moving on, getting the repair done.
Right.
But there's a lot more to it than just, just dumping that in there. I mean, this is, you, you can get a car with high mileage and do some repairs to it and still get a lot out of it, or it could break down the day after you get the repairs done to it, so it's just, which one do you do here?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was in the quandary as well.
So, I, I think I'm fine with moving on with the repairs, but, and Greg, I'm gonna put this on you, we gotta keep this moving, 'cause if we punt it down another six months, then we're gonna have another one up there we gotta repair.
I mean, do you want to replace or bid out all of them?
That's, that's why I need my maintenance director to come to us and say, here's what we have. We got nine units up here, here's what they're gonna probably cost here, so. And if you gotta get with the budget officer, auditor, and say, how are we gonna do this? Budget, Sheriff's Budget, County Budget, and there's a lot of moving parts to it, so.
They're all the same age, so it's.
Yeah, that, it, it depends on how they're taken care of, too. I'm gonna set a bunch of fifty-four-year-olds that are a lot better shape than me, they'd probably be a little better taken care of.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the repairs to unit nine for the sum of twenty-seven thousand, fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep me from getting too high-centered there.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
Where are we at with our emergency services agreement? We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I've had a copy of the agreement on my desk, just as a reminder, so who's kind of heading that up to talk to the partners? I, Chief, I'm not necessarily expecting you to do this, I think this is ours, John. So, unless you're already talking to someone.
No, so, so, so just for, for transparency, you know, having all the cards on the table, so things don't get lost in translation. So, when we decided to make the change a couple of weeks ago, I did reach out to the city administrator, passed the presentation of how the organization would shape up in, in what we presented here in commission, and just said that, you know, reaffirmed our commitment to honoring the current M O U until directed otherwise. You know, shared with him that we were ready and willing to, you know, introduce our staff when he ever in, in the city felt comfortable in doing so. And he wrote back saying that they were evaluating how they were going to move forward, and that's just kind of where we, where we've left it. So, you know, I, I felt it was important that I, I at least make that initial contact and let them know how we were going to proceed, and that there is no gap in the service currently. But I will certainly default to you to figure out how that path will proceed long term.
Yeah, and I've heard nothing back from the mayor or the city administrator, so.
So, I, I guess, you know, from my perspective, at this point, it's business as usual, we're going to continue.
We've got an agreement in hand. If we're okay still operating, operating under this agreement, then I'll, I'll put it to rest.
Well, no, well, we, we, we are on a day-to-day basis, but I will tell you that if we look back at the paperwork that was signed in eighty-eight, I believe, is that right?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Yep.
I don't think we're, we are following that agreement to the, to the minute detail. And I think that we have to look at it from the county's view. What, what does that say? What are we doing? And I think there are, there's a little bit of difference between what the M O U says and the, the billing we send to the city on a quarterly basis, I believe. We, we need to drill into that, and we, we need to do it soon, and may, and maybe it'll be up to us to, to say to the city, rather than wait for the city to come to us, here's what's, here's what the contracts or the M O U says, here's an example of what we've been doing the last year, here's the difference, let's talk about it.
Okay, so, whose lap does that land in?
Well, I, as I say, I don't think we should just wait on the city, wait on the city, wait on the city. I think we should build our own module schedule here that says, this is what the M O U says, this is our recent history, here's the difference, let's talk.
So, us three?
Well, with some help here, and with help with our, with our employee at Emergency Management.
But I know we've kind of talked about it, like I said. But I know we've kind of talked about it, like I said, I left it on my desk, that we need to do something and.
Okay, I think we should try to get something done internally during the week and let's put it on next week's, uh, agenda.
From my understanding, talking with the city is that they are working on the new M O U. You know, I don't necessarily know if that's what we, what we need, if we need to.
I'm probably meeting later this week or next week on Tuesday, whatever day, I think we need to, uh, close session, contract negotiations and discuss what we see the M O U looking like and what we can get it, what we can get going, so. Jill, I saw you shaking your head, I, I don't know what you're shaking your head about, shaking no, why can't we do it in a contract negotiations? It's exactly what this is, we're gonna talk about what we want. I don't wanna talk about it in open session and it's, that's absolutely closed session, contract negotiations. I mean, if somebody says it's not. You wanna do, talk about it in open session?
No.
So.
Well.
I will reach out to the city.
Well, we are talking about it in open session right now, but we're not talking about the nitty gritty of.
Okay, I will reach out to the city administrator.
I'm talking about it, not on the agenda because it's unfinished business, we've been talking about it for several weeks. So I'm just trying to get some kind of, uh, plan of action taken, uh, taken here so we can figure it out, so. Uh, if you wanna talk to the city, if you want, I, I don't know how you wanna do it, if we wanna do like Harry said, we figure out what we wanna, what we had, what we have where it is ago. Cause it's a lot different than it was.
Yeah, eighty-nine, things have changed a lot. Okay, anything else?
I think that was it.
I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to section six, ten point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into, go into closed session to discuss the following. Communication between public body and its auditor under section six, ten point zero two one subsection eighteen and personnel issues under section six, ten point zero two one subsection thirteen.
Second.
Call please.
Sam.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.